Hi. We have Joe and Scott has not, but I'll make a note when he comes in if you want. Okay.
Hey, real quick, I just heard that the meeting is being recorded.
We're gonna stop it as soon as we go into executive session.
Oh, okay.
But we have to call, we're calling the meeting to order in open. Yeah, we will. We'll do 10 times on the floor. All right. All right, so. So I'd like to call the special meeting of the Dover Select Board to order at 4:02 PM on Thursday, December 16th. Where our first order of business is executive session for personnel salary review. I'd like somebody to make a motion to go into executive session, please. Second, second. Dover Select Board is now coming out of executive session. Coming out of executive session by Nance consent at 4:42. Haven't changed these since you sent them this morning, have you?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's get Marco plugged in and we will discuss. What we just came out of executive session was a discussion about employee salaries. I think we need all settled down before we move forward here. And I'm waiting, I know Marco needs power.
I have power.
I know you do. All right. We want to share with you our idea. And we're going, and so I'd like, Joe, would you mind presenting it?
I guess so.
It's your idea, you should get credit.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just hope everyone can hear fine.
We can, we can hear you well.
Okay, so. I had, had thought about this and, and with the employees going forward. I'd actually like to with the minimum wage and all the increases that are going on in inflationary. Do an 80% increase in everyone's hourly and try to do, you know, 3%. An 80%.
Across the board per hour for every single employee plus a 3% increase on top of that. So it's gonna take some, we don't know what the numbers.
We don't know what the numbers are.
So we don't, so everybody gets 80 cents an hour, so. Yeah, well, you divide what you're making, yeah, okay, add that and then if you can't do it today, it's gonna be, it's, it's, it's pretty complicated to do in a meeting. And then add 3%.
Okay.
I, we took, we took a few rates of pay, it gets people close. Particularly the lower paid employees, brings them all up, it brings our low threshold of. Where we can start people at a higher rate. I think there are things we'd like to explore it, see it, what it does with the numbers, we do not know. It's, it's different, it's innovative and it's, it does, it doesn't just reward the top people with the big raise, it rewards everybody with a raise and then get another raise on top of it. So I hope that everybody's open to looking at what it does for everybody. I ran a couple of police officers, it's fairly close, it's not so close for you, Randy. But I'd like to give it a chance so that everybody can see what it looks like. It's gonna be work for Marco, but you can do it because you're super good with numbers.
So you take 80.
80 cents.
80 cents and then you add 80 cents to someone who's making $20, then $20.
And 80 cents and then you add them three.
Then times 1.03, okay.
So it, I'm guessing that the pay thing will not be settled today, but it's what we'd like to see how it models and how it models out for everybody. And it's, it's a very different idea for us, but it, it's giving everybody something and really helping the people at the bottom too. You can hire police officers potentially at a, at a lower ba, at a higher base rate than you would be. So I think it, it's something, maybe it's an adjustment adjuster for everybody to bring everybody up a little so that then we can go from there. So I, give us patience, I'm, I read today that there's legislation to extend. The same situation we had last year where town meetings can be either held all by paper ballot or at some later date like we did last year in May and that might be a fine thing to do. So we pretend, and they're gonna act on this probably the first two weeks of the session, so we may have time to mess with it a little more too. But I just, please let us weigh this out. I, I, I beg everybody's patience.
So just a, a verification, because you said it would be different on me and I came up with some different numbers and what I always look at from my staff and appreciate whatever I got. So when you said 80 cents to not, and Marco, I think that was gonna be my question, so it's gonna go 80 cents.
On top of their rate right now.
Now, then 3%.
On top of that.
That, okay, so now when you said that would be different for like me.
Well, because you, 8% on your salary is a lot more than 8% on somebody making $20 now. I mean, 3%, sorry.
It's because everyone's getting an equal dollar amount plus a percentage. If you're getting only a percentage, then the person who's paid the most gets the biggest raise.
So the 8% that you were asking for, you got the biggest raise. It's in your department.
So you're saying that, so I'll just say Travis and I, since we're salary, anybody else's salary, so we're also getting that 80 cents plus 3%.
So we're.
If, if I'm.
Thank you.
So what you do is for us salary people, you take 80 cents and you multiply by 2,080 hours and that's $1,664. Add that to your current base salary this year.
Right.
On top of that, you get 3%.
Okay.
So when you're doing straight percentage raises, the people who make the most get the biggest raise. So that, that disparity between the top and the bottom, it, it escalates every time you get 3%. This brings everybody up to a, a, a level higher, so everybody enjoys 80 cents potentially and then everybody gets 3%.
Impacting the.
Yes, yes, so that make the least most, right? So, so I know it's a pain to go through and do it all, but.
It won't be, it takes a few minutes and, you know.
Okay.
I just don't wanna do it right now.
No, I don't want you to do it right now. So are we all clear what we are, look, are potentially looking at? And we want. And we, and again, we need to run the numbers. It may blow the budget apart and, and may not, then we'll have to reconsider.
So I'll just say, you know, thank you for, you know, the time and effort that you guys definitely put into this because you also have, and I've mentioned it to you every time that I come. Argue, fight, whatever, to try to get more, that you guys are trying to also look out for the employees at the same time you're looking out for, you know, the taxpayers to the taxpayers. You guys are always in a competition. I respect that and I, you know, appreciate that. So I just wanna, wanna say that and I'll, you know, and I'll look at the numbers too and I'll be transparent as you guys know that I will also be looking to see what's going on. You know, within the law enforcement community, only because I did come back for the chief sheriff conference yesterday. And, you know, talked to a few chiefs up there and I also talked to the chief in the rain a little more coming back. And so some things have even changed. And I don't wanna get into it right now, but even more. So, so I would just say is, don't be surprised if you see me come back, you may not. So I just wanna throw that out upfront because again, you know, law enforcement is completely different than any other department, just like highways, different than. You know, you wanna stay, might be comparable to those, you know, and not compare whatever flavor grape you like to a melon, you know. Make sure when you do that, kind of get what I'm saying, so, so again, because we're, and I don't wanna rehash it.
No, I just.
So don't be surprised, and I may not, I don't know, I'll have to see what the numbers are.
I think it's an extraordinary time for everybody and so we'd like to try to make. It, it, it's still treat everybody as equally as possible, but to, to make it still a good place to work and, and a place that you're well compensated with, you know. So let us work through this angle and we will see if it makes sense. All right, so is any, are there any questions about what we're proposing? And Marco will run the numbers out of this meeting and get new budgets and out to everybody. All right, so now we're gonna do a general budget review of the capital plans first. Capital, shall we hit the building first? I looked at this capital budget myself, if anybody has any other comments. Eric. Eric DeRozier. I'm gonna.
Yes.
So we don't have anything budgeted for the brick building concerning this well. That we haven't already put in the 21, 22 budget. The ARPA funds. That, would that be an allowable use of that to your, to your understanding?
To my understanding, yes. But that being said, there's also the other money coming down from the feds to the states that goes out to municipalities to deal with water specific issues. There's just not. Specific guidelines on how that works yet, but yes, as far as from everything I've heard, the ARPA money would be, that, that would be an acceptable use of the ARPA funds.
And that is, I mean, if we needed to use it, that's money that we have now.
Correct, we have half of our total now, so 200 and, just under 50, I think.
Because I'm asking that because this potentially is gonna cost us a lot more money than we have in any budget for this well redo and all. Yes, and everything, so I just wanna make sure that we have, we have access to money that we may need at, at, at the common. Because that area, if it is, it doesn't have a reliable water source, it's really, the value of it is diminished greatly. At reliable clean water source, so saying that, I'm okay not putting any more specifically to the well and the, at the top of the hill. Because I'm thinking we're gonna probably have to tap some other source of money for that. And the water money would be good, but there's no guidelines, as you said. And we're not close to doing anything for a little bit anyway. Any other comments? That's my one comment about the capital building plan. Randy.
So what I did today. As we were talking last time, like on the siding and stuff, pardon and a couple of other things, but today. Dave picked me up, said I had to go down and get the snowboard, so we walked around the outside of the police department, looked at the siding. And I see that the siding is dead over 24, 25. I know it's not like right now, but he's in agreement, but that can even get probably pushed out even a little bit further. Because the siding right now on the rest of the building is still in pretty good shape, yeah, you know, you have like, you know, some little holes like this, you know, when ranches fall off and go into a cold and crack and. Maybe able to really be the fillers and some kind of like, you know, pocket, but. Just so right now, so if you wanna push that out, if that helps anything right now or not, I don't know if it does or not, but you can probably push that out of, you know, a couple more years on the road.
I appreciate that, Randy. I don't think it really matters right now because these things do come and, you know, they're, it's kind of fluid depending on what happens, but it's still, it needs to be in there as a placeholder. And 24, 25 doesn't look like a bad year at this point. The 23, 24 year does, but 24, 25 doesn't look bad, so I think we could, if we just leave it and keep track of it.
Just wanted to throw that.
Is everybody good with that? Yes.
And this may be ridiculous, but, so in our conversation earlier, we were talking about the, the foundation here and that ended up not having to be done, so that 8,000 didn't get spent. Does that change when we say balance forward to the next year?
Yeah, so that means about forward maybe more.
Correct.
Yeah. Anything else on the capital building by anybody? All right. Yeah, well, Sarah's trying to figure out a way to spend.
Efficiency Vermont is offering $4,000 to municipalities for energy upgrades. After going over things with Travis and looking at there, there isn't anything in our budget now that we could, that 4,000 could offset. So we're looking at three buildings in town, converting them completely to LED lighting. Travis is going out to try to get pricing on that and then whichever one is as close to 4,000 as possible but not going over will be where the LED lighting upgrade will happen.
Until which buildings were considered?
That would be the town garage, this building and the police department.
Yes, from my experience in changing, for example, these fluorescent lights to LED lighting, some of these you can just change the bulbs, some of them you have to.
We'll let the electrician tell us.
Yeah.
Marco. I was gonna suggest also the, the white bulbs at the town hall, I think are all incandescent and they're very dim, it's very dark when, you know, many meetings.
But that, that, if it's a matter of changing the bulbs, there is, there are also rebates available through Efficiency Vermont.
I know what I mean, just like, Dave went to buy our light bulbs, I mean, it's like, you know.
Right, we can, certainly, any, anytime, any kind of purchases like that are made, there's Efficiency Vermont's doing a lot of rebates right now.
Yeah.
Thermostats are, there's a hundred dollar rebate and things like that, so we, you know, if we're, if we make any purchases like that, we should just.
Sure.
Go on the Efficiency Vermont website first and see what rebates are available. It's a very easy search.
Yeah.
In the town hall, the dimmish are, incandescent dimmish, you're changing television, you're gonna have to change your dimmish. It's not as simple as changing bulbs.
Well, it's nice to be able to see as well.
And Sarah targeted, I think it's some of the highest electrications buildings in town for this.
That was, yeah.
So I think that that's a wise way to try to.
We went, yeah, because the town hall, yes, but it's not used as much. The town garage, this building and the police department are probably the three most heavily used buildings in town, so that will affect the greatest savings for us.
Any questions about that? Okay, capital equipment. Does any department heads or board members or anybody have any comments about the capital equipment fund? All right, I hear nothing. Everybody good with the capital equipment fund? Travis, Randy? And I assume that Rich is good with this because he's not here to argue, I'll be like. Okay, capital paving.
Right, just, do you have coffee?
Here's, here's the capital. I had already printed everything out. We're, we're paving more, more, your, more linear feet and paying less. Nice. Not grinding as much, we're gonna, we've got a good base. So we're doing some new paving too.
Yeah.
A little bit, a little bit.
Yeah.
Every little bit helps. All right, no questions about the capital paving, so at this point. We made revisions last time and I think those are pretty good, we can just sit on those until we come together to do basically everything. And we're not there yet, so now our next. Order is capital, I mean, general budget review. Linda. Lynn Sherman.
Hi, sorry, couldn't find my mute.
So you sent me an email about the assessors assistant going up to 20 to 25 hours when the appraisal begins.
My thought would be between now and then that those hours would hopefully get increased to that.
So you want it for this coming, the, the budget we're currently working on, 25 hour, 20 to 25 hours a week?
Uh, the new budget, I would.
The 22, 23 budget.
Uh, where am I? I would go to 20. And then the following year, I'll re, I'll add more, obviously depending if this person. Would take on additional hours.
And remember that if you go to 25 hours, then it's a benefit eligible.
Think it's benefit eligible at 20, isn't it? I can't hear anything.
Put it back on. I know it's you, but that sound is coming from your feed.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay, no, I have the employee personnel policy in front of me and they are benefit eligible 25 hours, so that is another. They're more, obviously that costs the town more money.
Right.
So I think. That at this point, until you get a person in there working 20 hours a week. How do you know that you need somebody 25? I think that I'd rather sit, evaluate that for the following year.
Well, that's my, that was my plan.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
So this is not for this year's?
20 would be for this year, for the 22, 23.
I got that.
I was only, I was only at 18 hours. Because that's current, what I have in my budget.
Okay, so Marco, could you change that to 20 hours a week for the 22, 23 fiscal year?
Sure, sure will.
Okay. All right. Other questions, that was, that was. Linda had requested that. Page one. Nothing, page two. Nothing?
Are you asking me?
No, we're just going, we're going, flipping through the budget page by page, if there's any questions. About anything. Or if somebody's thought that they might need something different or if there's a mistake or. Page three, electricity. When it comes to the electricity, I don't understand it, but I'm sure Marco you do, so. Yeah, I know, so.
So is, is the treatment plant on the, um, getting the, the solar credits?
Through the school.
Yeah, so it's up to the school to make that decision if they want to.
Okay, that's part of the school budget.
No.
It's all, it's in, so the, the transfer station building is treated like all the other town owned buildings, it gets its credits from the grid at the school.
Which the school owns.
The one at the transfer station, we have nothing to do and we just get rent from, that's, that's a completely different.
But I'm just looking net of solar credit.
The North Branch gets the solar credits too and it's up to, and I know that the River Valley School District is well aware of what is, is. Transpiring, so it's their decision if they don't wanna give them those solar credits anymore, we don't have any, you know.
I, I guess where I was going with that is if those solar credits are withheld from them, does that increase the solar credits for the other buildings in town?
Well, we can only take so much, right?
The deal, you, it's contractually, you're obligated to what it is now, it's, it's all decided upfront with grid, the board, the school board and. The solar company, so they, they look at the usage of each depart, of each building and they decided that's how. That's how the power would come off the grid based on who's using what.
So, but they, I know Rich told me this, that they increased the solar credit to the North Branch because they needed more.
Okay.
So they, I think it's flexible at some point, but that's really the school's call.
It is, and they get.
To make that, to initiate that.
And they get their own reconciliation and all that stuff, so.
So, yeah, so if this, if the school, that's, we, we're out of it, we're the benefactors of it. Because that's why we don't get any benefit from the one at the landfill besides rent, because we were already maxed out at the town buildings here, so. All right.
So we might not get more.
No. Any questions on page three? Page four, which ends administration. Fire department. It's an increase, but it's small, so it looks like a lot at 14%, but it's really only. Or whatever, it's not that much. Police department, huh? They're gonna happen in this fiscal year, so we're gonna eat them. Our police department, Randy or Mike, do we have anything that you guys wanna manipulate?
No, I mean, I. Looked at what we had done and nothing is changing.
Well, it's all gonna change once Marco puts his other numbers in.
Yeah, that's the one, the. One that, it's based on this.
Meaning.
What's in the budget now is what you and I spoke about, so I'm okay.
Okay, so that's through page six, now we're on to page seven. Transfer station. Let's go to page eight where the appropriations are, and I see Maggie is here with us. Maggie.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good to see you all.
Um, so Maggie, I see, are you guys asking for $3,000 this year?
Yeah, we are, I just, I had verbally spoke to Andy about it and I believe Jeanette brought it to your attention at the last meeting and I just formally sent in a letter with the request. So. Yeah, I don't know what my next steps are.
Well. I'll give you my feeling on it.
Sure.
I'd like to pull that as a separate article. I'd like this pulled out as a separate article, just because of the transition you guys have had moving away, way, um, and allow discussion on it so people understand. I think that, um, I think the clarity would be good.
I would be more than glad, and actually I'd really like to do that, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, Jeanette, can we handle that? Thank, thank you, I just think that you speaking and, and, and from the heart about what happened and, and, and what you still provide to this valley, and, uh, I think that's valuable.
Yeah, I think it's important for everybody to know that we still serve the valley, and, you know, if anyone wants to ask questions, you know, there was a lot of information in the paper, and I tried to be as forthright as possible, you know, with everything, um, but yeah, I would definitely be up for answering any more questions people from the town have.
Does anybody have a problem with that? No, okay, thank you, thank you, and so we will put that on as a warrant article for our town meeting.
Okay, sounds great, and I'll be in attendance however.
Whenever.
Yeah, exactly.
Very good.
Thank you all, I appreciate your consideration, I really do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just a question, is, did we get a letter from Sevett with the amount? Because they usually do it on a per capita basis.
But they didn't do it on that.
Oh, okay.
They, they gave us the number.
The old number?
Are you talking about me, the gathering place?
Sevett's, Sevett's.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We're, we're good with you, Maggie, thank you. Uh, so the color coding, what does that mean? The orange and the yellow?
That was, um, we had some, ones that we hadn't gotten yet, so we, uh, like, warrant articles should be the bright yellow.
Okay.
And that's the only thing that really should be highlighted on.
Okay, so, so I would like to, did we get, besides a request from the Eastover Fire Department, uh, any explanation why they need another, yeah, fifteen thousand dollars basically?
I, I had looked at the budget, and there were a couple of items that I mentioned to Jeanette, so she can get some clarity on, like, a few things just jumped.
Thank you, because we don't see that.
Yeah, it was like dispatching went from like four hundred dollars to fifty-five hundred.
Well.
You know, so there were a few things that just.
Dispatching has gone up, um, Rich's went up a lot too, and I know they all use Keen Mutual Aid, right, so, um.
Why is it, like, mutually aid right here?
But I'm looking back here at fire. There's one percent, yeah, but it went up, it went, went up multiple, yeah. But the Fire Department dispatching from the Westover Department is fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, so.
Yeah, but this went from four hundred dollars to five thousand, five hundred.
So what's the why?
Yeah, so maybe that's, maybe it's correct, I, you know, just, yeah, and then they had one other stipend for volunteer, that's an extra five thousand, so they had a couple of things that went up, you know, stipends went up five thousand, and mutually went up over five thousand.
Okay, well, um, if you can get some clarity on those two, I'm sure something else is with either utility or something, because there's debt oil or, or gas or things like that probably went up too.
Sure, a few, a few things went up a little bit, but two things went up a lot.
So you guys have asked that, perfect. Okay, any, uh, so we've received everything at this point, requests, okay, that's awesome.
We have the library, well, now are they a warrant article, can you, or, okay? I had a meeting with the trustee yesterday to review the health insurance, like how they, how the billing works, et cetera, and they were just wondering if they were gonna have to come up to town meeting.
I think that for a quarter of a million dollars almost, they can.
They should probably anticipate it every year.
So, yeah. Did we see their budget?
I can, I can send it around.
Could you please? I'd like to look at that.
We can make some copies now.
Yeah, or email it, whatever you want to do.
How much do we pay?
It's, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars, it's coming in. That's what Rich has got in his budget.
Is that for, I heard you just talked.
That's just for Westover. Eastover is now going in at like, what was it, forty-five? Fifty-five, so we're talking about sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Uh, and now we'll move to highway while we get our copies. I see that, uh, single stream starting to go back up again. What the heck? I look at that every time we have. Really?
We're getting over a problem.
Thank you.
Well, you, yeah, you might have to. And what, what if people paid to dispose of a tire?
I think it's five, ten dollars, depending on size, truck tires are more.
Okay. Well, we don't want people throwing them in the woods either. That, if it gets too expensive, people will do that, or just, you know. Burn them or something stupid, you know.
Your tire to the tire place and they charge you to dispose of them.
Okay, that's probably good.
Yeah.
Encourage people to landscape it.
Yeah.
There aren't any changes from what we last went through, so are you, you have a copy of the current budget?
I have, I'm good.
Okay, well, we're not gonna vote on anything today anyway. All right. So, this is just a proposed, that the library, they don't give us last, their last year, so we see the differences, but it's in here.
Well, yeah, they went from two twenty-two, two thirty-nine, down to two seventeen.
That's because there's a surplus.
There was a bit of a surplus, yeah.
Yep.
Plus, they're also taking into account.
A fifteen thousand dollar surplus.
You know how we do the HRA, we don't budget the full amount, they, they also now realize that they're, yeah, so, because we went back historically and looked at what they actually spent.
Then I appreciate that, because we write, we give them this money, and then if they don't spend it, then where does it go, the surplus, I guess, right, so.
Then they ask us for less and go, yeah, definitely helps.
All right, um. Any other questions today on the budget review? All right, next we are, looks like we lost Joe at some point here, so Joe has, yes, Jeanette?
So, when are we going to? You don't want us on next year, is that that?
No. Yes. Potentially. Um, again, if, if we're gonna be allowed to push off town meeting, which is probably gonna be, uh, we may not be doing town meeting till May again, which means there's no gigantic urgency to, to do it, so. Then we should know that by mid-January. All right, consider a layer of support, did we have that printed off?
No.
For the businesses?
I actually wrote two versions to see if people
All right, well, read them to us.
Okay. The town of Dover Select Board hereby declares a support for individual businesses in our community to make a determination as to whether they require patrons to be masked at their establishments. Rather than imposing townwide mandate, it is our belief that businesses are in the best position to decide what policy works best for them. Um, the other Dover Select Board has elected not to enact a townwide mask mandate, however, the board supports any business that determines that a mask mandate is in their best interest and the best interest of their patrons, and encourages all members of the public who enter such establishments to adhere to the policies set by the business owners and operators.
I like number two.
I do too.
It just seems, it's a more positive thing, that is, and saying why we're doing one thing, but, uh, we, yeah, uh, and, and, and encourages good behavior.
Yes.
Everybody else?
You didn't top, you didn't copy it as I was reading.
So, if she sends you that, then you can Dover, you know, letterhead it and put it, put the, uh, the signature in lines, and, um, we can put that on the agenda for next week. Is that good? Is everybody gonna be here next week, Joe? You got, everybody else gonna be here? Okay, and then we need again right after the first of the year, so. Okay, um, we have, uh, the last article on the agenda is to approve the warrants of December eleventh, twenty twenty-one for one hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and five cents.
I moved that we approved the warrant of December eleventh for one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and five cents.
Ten seconds, any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else that anybody wants to say at this afternoon meeting, special meeting? If not, yes, Jeanette does, good.
No, it's really, well, it's just related to next. As far as the, we'll be at quotes for the freezer. Can you give me an idea, or somebody can give me an idea, um, do you want quotes for uprights as well as chest freezers, like cubic feet, size?
The chest freezer would be about seven hundred dollars, an upright freezer would be about twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
I don't know, but I, I, I need to know my specs so I can look.
Can, can, someone, can Dave give you the size that would fit there reasonably? I mean, that, I think that that's.
Be seven cubic feet for a, for a flat one.
I'm sorry?
Seven cubic feet. And an upright's about ten cubic feet.
I thought we were only gonna look at chests.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So.
If they're not already frozen, yes, if they're, yeah, if they're already frozen, it will act really well, but.
Yeah, but honestly, the real use of that is for ice for events. Yes.
I have three chest freezers and one upright. The one upright is the biggest use of electricity in my business.
There you go.
They're the most wasteful of all.
Okay, well, I'll get a couple of those then.
And just, Jeanette, after you, before you start, maybe just take a quick look at the Efficiency Vermont website, the rebates, and see if they have any particular rebates for freezers before you.
Do you have any other comments, Jeanette? That was quick. All right.
The one that we, that we just agreed on? The Dover Select Board has enacted not to enact a townwide mask mandate, however, the board supports any business that determines that a mask mandate is in their best interest and the best interest of their patrons, and encourages all members of the public who enter such establishments to adhere to the policies set by the business owners and operators.
I'm just curious about the wording, the second time you say mask mandate, that we support, that you support businesses? Wanting a mask mandate?
We're, we're saying that any business that chooses to have a mask mandate, that the Select Board backs them on their option to make that choice.
Mandates that are, were their official policy, that they're teaching businesses' policy versus a mandate that is something, something you've got.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll amend that.
Or guidelines, or, or, or.
Masks.
You know, the town businessman saying, well, I support a mandate, so we'll be included about it.
I see what you're saying, that I, the board supports any business that determines that they it, it somehow needs to say that the, the business.
All right, let me, let me work on that a little bit, and I'll email it to.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I hear, I hear you now. Let me work on it a little bit, I'll email it to everybody, we can.
I think that it's just that little bit, you, you wanna say that if you wanna put a policy, a policy or a requirement, that you have to be masked, we're gonna, we're gonna back, we're gonna support that. And we ask people to respect that, um, request. Yes.
The health department may have something different to say about restaurants, because I looked up last week, they said that as long as the staff is behind spit shields, we don't have to wear masks, but otherwise, if you don't have one, we have to wear masks. And the customer should be required to wear masks. So, you might look at that before you finalize it.
Well.
But that comes, that's not the Select Board. If it's coming down from the state, they supersede anything we've said.
So we're just basically saying, if you need to do it, we're with you.
Right.
But we don't want to do it for everybody, at this point anyway.
Freedom!
All right. All right.
If this is all that they should.
Are we done for the evening? I'd like to adjourn this special meeting at five twenty-eight PM. Thank you all for your attendance.